You're now recording.
Oh, so, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the 9:19 Select Board Reorganization Meeting to order at 6:30. And welcome our newly elected Scott Sawway and newly re-elected Vicki Capitani and Dan Baliaati to their select board seats. And I can give you the oath of office right now. So if you would stand. Raise your hand if you're ready. Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont and the Town of Dover and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or government thereof? That you do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected for the Town of Dover and will therein do equal right and justice to all men to the best of your judgment and ability according to law?
Thank you.
Ex- ex- well. You would sign under your appropriate, I think you're the three-year term, right, Dan?
Yeah. Congratulations.
So, and we entertain motions for to appoint the Select Board Chair.
I move that we appoint Vicki Capitani as Select Board Chair.
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Ellen Baker?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott and Dan, aye.
Yes, aye. Sorry.
Okay. Dan?
I'm sorry.
There was a motion on the floor to appoint Vicki Capitani as the Chair. Okay. Unanimous. So, I will turn it over to Dan.
Now, I would like, I am entertaining motions for Select Board Vice Chair. I'll nominate Sarah Shippey.
Second.
Any other nominations, discussions? Sarah, will you accept it if it's your?
Yes.
Bearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Select Board meeting rules and procedures. We, I don't know the last time we adopted these. We've been working under a document that we have. We were going to try to project it if we could because we didn't have the day. So, Jeanette is working on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, what we can do is continue to work under the last time we, last adopted rules, and we will get them on an agenda and review them. That's fine with me. Does that work for you, Jeanette?
Yes, and you adopt the same ones.
Right, but I, I think it's important that everybody take a look at them as well. So, so.
Don't you?
Okay. So, can somebody make a motion that we adopt the existing rules as approved by a previous Select Board until we have an opportunity to review?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting schedule. We typically meet the first and third Tuesdays of the month at 6:30. And at this point, we're going to be meeting here at the Dover Town Hall. Does anybody need any modification to that? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we maintain our meeting schedule the first and third Tuesdays of the month at 6:30 and in the immediate future at Dover Town Hall.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Selection of official newspaper. I am going to abstain from this discussion.
I move that we select the Deer Valley News as the official newspaper for the Dover Select Board.
My second.
Any discuss, do you want me to say that?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
I'm basically stepping back off of this one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, it's four, zero, and one abstention.
Thank you. Town attorneys. We currently use Katie and Dugan, local attorneys, and then Stichel, Page, and Fletcher in Burlington.
I move that we adopt Katie and Dugan and Stichel, Page, and Fletcher as the official town attorneys.
Second.
Joe? Any discussion about the town attorneys? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town officer appointments. Before we get into this, Jeanette, are these people listed here willing to do this? Are you aware or not?
I am. The only one I question is the animal control officer.
Okay.
He's, he's the current. He's the current, he's also trying to sell that. And, so. With Tom Bean.
Will you contact him if we appoint him and let him know he is until he, when he resigns? Okay. Civil Defense Officers, the Select Board nomination?
Should we do all, can we do them all together?
Can we do it all at once?
Super dumber.
Okay. Yes.
I'd like to turn the clock. If it's possible.
This is the town officer appointment, which are like the tree warden, the fire chief.
This is not the, this is not the liaison reports.
The next one, fair enough. I got, I have it.
Okay. So, unless we object, I nominate the Select Board as the Civil Defense Officers, Becky Arbella as Council on Aging Representative, Joe Mahon as Energy Coordinator, Richard Warner as Exposure Control Officer, Lori O'Hern as Greenup Day Coordinator, Sandy McDougall as Animal Control Officer, Travis Briggs as Road Commissioner, Linda Holland as Town Service Officer, Linda Holland as Town Agent, Andy McLean as Tree Warden, Richard Warner as West Dover Fire Chief, Dan Baliaati and Kevin Stein as Wyndham Solid Waste Representatives, and Sarah Shippey and Kevin Stein as Wyndham Regional Commissioners.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appoint Department Committee Board and Commission Liaisons. The current appointments are Administration Joe, Bytown Committee Vicki, Economic Development, Development Review Board Dan, Economic Development Vicki, Fire Department Sarah, Highway Department Scott, Library Scott, Planning Commission Vicki, Police Department Sarah, School Board Liaison Dan, and Zoning Office Joe. So, who wants to switch? What would you like to do?
I'd like to do the Highway Department. Maybe switch with Scott to the school.
Okay.
If you like that.
Okay. So, it would make sense that you would be the school liaison since you're in the school, right? Is that okay?
And I, I was going to suggest that I take the Planning Commission from you.
Thank you.
Because I'm going to that meeting pretty much regularly anyway.
The Planning Commission because she goes as the DRB Chair.
Well, yeah, I'm not really officially on the committee, but I'm attending, so.
So, you're there anyway.
I'm there anyway, so.
Okay, great.
And then that still leaves you with two.
Anybody else want any swaps? Joe? Scott, are you good with the library and the school? You're very studious.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, the new lineup that we're going to nominate in whole here is Administration Joe, Bytown Vicki, DRB, I mean, no.
Yeah, DRB.
DRB, Dan, Economic Development Vicki, Fire Department Sarah, Highway Department Dan, Library Scott, Planning Commission Sarah, Police Department Sarah, School Board Liaison Scott, and Zoning Office Joe.
So moved.
Any discussion? Everybody happy?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Awesome. All right. Now, we're going to call the regular meeting to order now that we've reorganized ourselves and we're very organized.
Mm-hmm.
I will take public comments. Randy Johnson?
So, I would like to introduce the new officer for Dover Police Department, Timothy Cunningham. He lives in Bloomington. He started, he worked with us for just over a week. You already mentioned that, right?
Yes.
And Select Board, I don't know who you know, but Dan Baliaati, Scott Sawway, Vicki Capitani, Sarah Shippey, and Joe Mahon, and Harpal.
And some department heads out there.
Okay. So, we have Shannon Leowood, Technical Development Assistant, Tabby Friedman, zoning, Travis the Highway. Oh, no. No.
He's the next one.
Oh, he's the next one. Okay. This is my daughter. Linda Kirsten, I forget what, you were just recently.
She's an assessor.
She works with Linda.
Right. And then Sherman.
The assessor.
It's the assessor.
And the Office.
Welcome.
That's it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for putting a face to a name for everybody. We appreciate it.
All right.
All right?
We'll see you around.
Thanks.
Welcome.
So, I know you have some things, but Travis has an announcement too, and then we'll, we'll move on to.
I'd like to welcome my new hire to the crew, Andrew Richardson.
Welcome.
He's worked from all roles for the past three, three and a half years, and he just joined us this week, so.
Three days in.
Yep.
Well, welcome as well.
Thank you.
And it's, it's nice to know the, the highway guys. What is your route? Do you know? Do you know what?
He's kind of Billy's old route.
Billy's old route.
Yeah. I don't know if I heard this yet.
That's okay.
I'm sure I won.
Hopefully, he won't be doing any plowing anytime soon, so.
Hopefully.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, I know Randy has more extra comments.
Yep, I do. So, just to let the Board know, after 44 years of service to the Town of Dover, Bobby Edward is no longer an employee of the Town. I had to let him go to insubordination. Side joke. Anyway, he has officially resigned, so he's no longer a Town employee. This Saturday is Leonard Paul's funeral down here on Holland Road. We may be anticipating a big crowd, so I'm just letting the Board know that I've got two officers going to be over there. It may be a potential to keep the, everybody safe and stuff. They're going to make a decision on whether or not to close the road, maybe from 1:00 to 3:00, even though the funerals are at 2:00. Also, because of yesterday's town meeting, Sarah will be in touch with you because of the way it went yesterday. They improved everything. We have to change a portion of personnel policy for the on-call or the pay differential. Those follow-ups are different, so that will be ready for the next Board meeting. That's it.
Thank you.
Is that clear, Shannon?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments from anybody in the audience or on Zoom?
I have one.
Okay. Dan?
I'd like to thank the Town of Dover for allowing us to use this wonderful hall to do the memorial to Mary Birdie, who was the Executive Director of the Dover Historical Society. Thank you very much. We had a wonderful crowd of people from all over the town, and people from out of town as far as Wisconsin and California came to the memorial, and they saw our wonderful town and beautiful hall. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Anybody else with a comment?
Yes. Steve Henry here.
Hi.
How are you?
What was your last name again? I'm sorry.
Henry, H-E-N-R-Y.
You're the, you, you own the stud property? Is that what you said before?
Yes. We have the property up there.
Okay.
And my, my biggest thing is, is we're not notified on what's going on with the tower, and I understand, I'm talking to the tower people, that it all goes through you guys or the Town or whatever, that you're notified. I'd love to be able to be notified that people are coming on the property.
And what they're doing.
And what they're doing. And also, the tower guy was saying that, oh, yeah, the smaller tower needs to come down, and I would, I'm looking to possibly use that to put solar panels on, if that's a possibility.
Our main liaison with the tower is our emergency coordinator and our fire chief. His name is Rich Warner.
I know well.
Are you aware of him?
I know well.
Okay. So, we can certainly reach out to him and, and ask him to let you know when people are coming. The other, the other department that uses it is the Highway, but Rich normally is in charge of that. So, let's, let's have him reach out to you, and you guys can talk about it. I don't know what the stipulation is with the older, smaller tower, if it can stay or not. We'll have to look into some of the permits on that.
That'd be beautiful.
Okay. Thank you.
And whatever I could do, whatever I could do to, to help, that'd be great.
Okay. And do you reside up there?
Unfortunately, not yet.
Okay.
But soon.
Okay. So, do we have contact information so we can get ahold of you, Mr. Henry?
I believe we do. And also, my, my friend Jerry Colette, I'm sure everybody knows her, she's kind of my, my eyes up there when I'm up there.
I, I think we understand your concerns and your question. So, I have a comment from the audience here. Linda, did you have a comment about this?
I, I do. I will need to be going up there as well because I know that there was some work being done, and I have to just make note of how many paracels are on the tower, so.
Okay.
Is there, Steve?
So, no, it comes from me. Thank you.
I need to know, do they have a camera?
Okay. So, Mr. Henry, our town assessor wants to also access the property. So, maybe it would be, be useful if we could get a cell phone for you, if you could call the Town Office and leave it cellphone, so we can?
Sure.
And she wants to know, is, we, I don't know if he knows if there's a cam, is there a camera on the tower?
No, I meant on your driveway.
Oh.
Go through the gate.
Oh. Is there a security camera?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we might, we, I think we need to work out some of these details. So, if you could call the Dover Town Office and speak with Jeanette, she could take the pertinent information, and then we could have an open conversation.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that, your concerns, to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get back to you.
Okay. Thanks.
Have a good, have a good day.
You too. Anything else from anybody? You see anything up there, Tabby?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay. No? New business. The Dover Free Library requests for approval of the sign. So, we had some information sent to us from Ed Brookman, who is the Board, the Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Dover Free Library. The sign was not permitted, from what I understand. It is on Town property, and even Town properties need to get permits. We are the landlord, and we weren't notified. So, his letter is, "The intent of this letter is to seek approval for a new sign at the Dover Free Library. The old sign had to be replaced for a number of reasons: rotting wood, too low in relation to snow removal, and no ability to include operating hours on the sign. A new sign was designed and ordered. Once the snow melted, the sign was installed. Subsequent to installation, it was learned that the process was a violation of the Town of Dover sign ordinance, which requires a permit even though the new sign was a direct replacement of an existing sign. The Board and the Library apologize for this oversight and will submit a permit application as soon as possible. Note that the dimensions of the new sign are well within the criteria of the ordinance. Upon receipt of the permit application, please contact me or John Flores at the Library if there are any additional requirements." Thank you. Okay. Tabby, have they filled out a sign permit?
They have filled out, completed the sign permit with the sign design.
Okay. You, as the person who handles that, what would you recommend we do at this point?
I would recommend that should you want any other information on that sign, at one point, concern was brought to me that there was no information saying Town Hall or Kids in the Country, so should you want any additional information, that that be designed and then either included with the sign app or as additional verbiage on that sign, should the Town desire it?
Thank you. What does the Board think? It does say Dover Free Library and has places where they can put letters for, for hours.
Right.
There does appear to be sign, enough space below to put a Kids in the Country sign.
Which I.
It's the same building.
Yes. I, I, I would like to see the sign incorporate, at bare minimum, Kids in the Country, but something should, you know, recognizing this is the Dover Common and that's, and Town Hall is here as well, is, is I don't know how many different signs we want to have put up.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have a, a sign that said Dover Town Common and then the three, the three buildings or business buildings, whatever. It would have been a nice integrated sign for the whole common.
Exactly.
Yes, Joe?
Agreed, but I guess we're just going to wait for that one to rot back out.
Well, not necessarily.
And just police ship had her hand up, and now it's not, so I'm not sure if she has a question.
The rest of the Board, what are your feeling about it?
I mean, I just wish we would have known in advance, but I, I don't know how they would really be able to. Can you hold up the sign design yet? I think we have it, or I've seen it somewhere.
So, there's clearly room underneath where it could say Kids in the Country Daycare. Without.
And potentially, you could do something, a curve over the top that says Dover Town Common.
Joe?
I guess the entity of Kids in the Country, the Board Directors and them, do they want anything on the sign? Have they ever requested anything to have as a sign?
They used to have a sign on the side of their building. I don't know that they even knew that this was going to happen, you know? And we, as landlords, I feel, should have been notified as well because, actually, we are the people who should have asked for a sign.
That's correct.
So, actually, we are the people in violation now.
Correct.
The Town is in violation, so it's kind of a quandary.
Interesting.
Yes. Yes, Joe?
So, I make a suggestion, because we're not going to solve anything here, that our library and our, who's our librarian, library liaison?
Sky.
If you, Scott, could reach out to Kids in the Country for me and the library and see if you can, see if they would have wanted something on there, and then we can re-look at this. We're not going to solve anything about this tonight. I am totally in agreement with what Vicki says. That is our building, that is our sign, and they should not have put it up without letting us know. With that said, we're not going to solve anything until we talk to the other parties and then reach out and put a new sign. As of right now, do we want them just to keep the sign up until we come up with a better solution? Seeing we paid for the sign as taxpayers.
No, I'm not sure that we did. I don't know if it was donated or it was purchased. I don't know that piece, and that's another piece that we could ask.
Exactly.
But yes, you're right. I mean, unless it's in one of their special funds that are, the patrons support, the Town may have paid for it already. Yes, Tabby?
I do know that they requested that the Highway Department, I believe it was the Highway Department, install it for them, or the Town employees install it for them.
Did that happen on Town time? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, because you guys were unaware as well.
They had asked Dave to put it up, and Dave did as Dave does. They put it up. You'll fall. Seven, eight minutes.
Okay. So, this is a, a learning experience for a lot of us. So, Scott, if you would reach out to the daycare and also ask the Library who, you know, who paid for that sign? I mean, I think that we need to answer those questions before we go forward. I, I feel that it's fair to leave it there until we make a decision, but it needs to be dealt with in, I would say, within the month of June.
Yep.
Okay?
Agreed.
Everybody good with that? So, we, at this point, we're not approving the sign permit. We need more information.
Absolutely.
And with that, would also be a waiver, if we do approve, a waiver of the sign fee?
Yes.
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 All right?
A question. Do you want to consider, or will this come when the sign or the additional information is designed, do you want a banner or a curved piece to go on top that says Dover Town Common, identifying the overall area of property?
That would have to be something.
Yeah. I think that first, we need to find out if Kids in the Country want on. And then, I believe, didn't Dave build the sign? No. Somebody else built the sign.
I thought, I thought, I hired somebody.
That was Facebook hearsay, so, okay. So, the question would be, can, can another topper of the sign be done and made a sturdy sign? I mean, we don't want it to be, you know, an add-on that isn't, or do we have to start all over again?
There's enough parameters. It'd be nice to have, like Vicki says, Dover Town.
Dover Town Common.
And then everything identified. Yes.
Exactly. So that it becomes a nice universal sign, sign plaza for the Town Common.
Should be a sign plaza because who knows? I mean, the Library would be there.
So, Scott, Scott, would you also find out who made the sign so that we could get more information on how that sign could be modified? Travis?
I, I asked Dave to find out whether he had the sign right. We can make a call later on.
Okay. Thank you.
I had it written down somewhere as a call.
So, we will defer until we have more information and knowledge about the sign. We have not turned it down. We just are deferring at this point. Okay. Dover Free Library has a request for approval of electrical work. This is another letter from Ed Brookman. The purpose of this letter is to request approval from the Select Board for a planned electrical project at the Dover Free Library. The project is to install two new GFCI outlets on the siding, on the siding of the children's room, and to replace the existing GFI outlet next to the children's entrance door. The electrician will drill holes in the siding for a minimal amount of intrusion to the siding. The Library recently received a grant of $1,500 from the Vermont COVID-19 Response Fund of the Vermont Community Foundation. The grant specifically targets enhancing public internet access through the purchase and/or upgrading of hardware, et cetera. The purchase of the GFCI outlets is, is highly recommended for patron slash community member outdoor access of the Library's wireless hotspot provided by the Vermont Public Service Board. The Library has received two bids for the electrical, from electrical contractors on this project. The best option at this point appears to be the quote from Danda Electric LLC for $560. If you have any questions, let me know. Contact me, John Flores, Ed Brookman. Do we have any concerns about this from a building maintenance issue? Travis?
My biggest concern is, from what I've already heard, is they would like an area designated next, which is all, I think they want to put it in the same area as the well, which we have so many things on right now with the well system. I think we should just hold off on any of the outside improvements until we've gotten our well situation figured out here, in my opinion.
Fair enough. I wasn't exactly sure that they were talking about on that side of the building.
I think this is a step one, I think there's more to come, besides just...
I think that's prudent. Joe?
I think we just make a motion that they can't do anything electrical because of the well, and we don't have it.
Particularly on the exterior of the building.
Yeah, no exterior work until the well issue has been resolved.
Can you ask, also with the library, Scott?
Getting Scott's busy.
How long they have to spend that money? Because I don't want, I mean, I just, I think that's an important thing. Fifteen hundred dollars is a fair amount of money, and so if you can ask when that, what the timeframe is that they need to spend the money. So... Was that a motion? Joe?
Well, just to make it...
Okay, so say, wait, let's talk to Travis one more time.
I mean, as far as the electrical conduit and the outlets, I don't see it being a problem as far as a building issue, but from what I hear down the road, they're wanting more than just those outlets, so...
Okay, one more second. Scott, could you add that to your list? Is this the, is there more to this plan that we're not aware of? Yes?
Tabby?
Yes, you're aware?
I'm not sure if this relates or not, but I did get an inquiry from John about they want to put a gazebo. And I don't know what, if or where, and I said, that's going to need to be permitted. It would need to go through the select board, give them the whole set of information. So if this relates to that space, I don't know, but he did say that they want to do a gazebo.
So we, I think we would like to know information if there's a whole plan with this, so, yes?
I don't, I only know what I know from reading that letter, but just whatever, it's going to cost about five hundred dollars, just give or take, and then they have a thousand dollars. I mean, obviously they have to get money somewhere else for a gazebo, because a gazebo's not going to...
They don't grow...
To me, I have to speak to them before I say anything, but I just thought maybe they'll get some lawn furniture or something for...
I think that, find out everything you can about this particular project and the sign.
Yeah, of course.
So Joe, can you restate your motion?
We need to find out more information.
Or maybe...
We need to...
We just need to make a moratorium on any exterior, particularly until we resolve the exterior changes, until we resolve the well.
Correct. Thanks.
There we go.
So Scott's got some finding out.
Scott's? Going to be busy.
The moratorium's in place until we get the information and figure out whether it's going to have any impact.
Right, until we, and until we make, stop the moratorium. I mean, at this point, exterior changes could be adding more problems to the issue. So, all right, everybody good with that? All right. Now we're going to discuss the mask resolution in light of the governor's announcement that we signed last July first, third, July third. So I asked for this to be on the agenda because we asked for this mask resolution, which is not really super, it's not ordinance, it's not binding, but at this point, we, if we want to remove, I think we, if we want to, we should rescind it or affirm that we want to continue to go forward with it. So I'm looking for the boards and the public's opinions on this. Randy?
I guess I'll speak. Everybody already knows my feeling. It goes back to the beginning of the year, was not in favor for obvious reasons. I think you should do it.
I should, we should do what?
No, you should get rid of the, your resolution or whatever it is. There's already, Seven-Eleven has already taken down their no-mask signs.
Okay.
I did check on that in the seventh...
And they were the first to...
And I did go in and ask out about it, and they did. They are beating it up to their employees on whether or not they want to wear it or not. It's like I said before, these businesses still have the right, with or without your resolution, to have the sign left up and say you can't come in without a mask. They still have that right. If people go in without a mask, they ask them to put one on and leave, and they don't, they can call us, we will go down there, tell them that the business wants them to wear the mask or leave, just like any other policy or that they have to require their patrons to do or not do. And if they, you know, if the patron doesn't want it, then we'll tell them to leave, and if they don't leave, now we'll arrest them if they trust us. So I do believe that you should rescind your resolution.
Dan?
I agree with my business, I'll ask people to wear a mask, but it just addresses the town, so what do we do at the Town Hall?
Well, it addresses all the businesses in this town, too.
I know that.
So...
But I mean, if we remove this restriction, which I don't have a problem with, how does it affect the N.D. and Janette and all the people in the town offices?
Okay, that's a second piece of this whole thing. Any other board comments?
Yeah, I think we should leave it up to businesses and not, and yeah, move it away. And then maybe if we did feel like, you know, amending it, would we be able to, just would we be able to take it away for other places and have it in place for, for just the town offices? Would we be able to do that?
We got to decide.
Yeah, Tabby?
I'm kind of in agreement with allowing or enabling a business to be able to make a decision on their own to say, we are going to maintain masks because we don't know who out there is vaccinated or not. If you're out walking the trail with your friends and you're in a comfortable position, have at it. In regards to the town offices, we do get traffic in there, we don't always know who is vaccinated. I had somebody come see me who wasn't, and I had him in their socially distant chair and remained masked. My personal comfort would be, we as the town office, it's the business of the town, and should we collectively decide we'd like to keep our masks in place or not? That's something that we can discuss. My personal feeling is, you know, unless somebody that I know is in to see me and says that they're vaccinated and I can trust that, I'm pretty much going to stay masked to cover the unknown at this point. But I see our town office as yet another business that would decide within itself.
Correct. And I think that that is an important distinction. I think that the Highway Department, you guys are working with each other every single day, it's going to be hot, it's going to be, but the...
The transfer station.
The transfer station. Each building should have their own guidance based on what transpires in that. But I mean, your highway guys have been working together a long time, and, you know, the Police Department, you guys have basically a secure location where anybody who comes in, so I would be, I think that the people who work in those buildings, and they should let the town, the select board know what their decisions are for masking within their own buildings. So then Dan brings up the Town Hall. I think that that should be on a case-by-case basis. If you're having an event and you want people masked, you can put a sign up that says this event is a masked event. If you don't want them masked, then you can say, it's, you know, don't put a sign up. Linda?
Is the, you Town Hall, this building, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Is it now open for people to use again? Oh, okay, good.
I don't think that we ever said it was not used. We were going to allow Becky to cook here for some of her meals, so I don't think that it's ever been shut down.
Never shut down. You had to follow the inside guidelines of how many people could be in a building at any one time.
Okay, understood, all right.
So it was never, maybe for the first six weeks when they shut down.
Dan?
So my question is, personally, I checked on my square page, and during the period of COVID, fifteen thousand five hundred and forty people came into the coffee bar. So my choice was a mask. What I'm trying to say is, us as a government, the Town Hall, the town offices, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Highway Department, are governmental offices. So if we drop this ordinance, can Janette and Andy ask people to wear a mask in their office?
That's exactly what I was just suggesting, as a possibility, that the town office would have their own guidelines based on what they all felt comfortable with. The Police Department would have their guidelines, the Fire Department would have theirs, Travis might have multiple ones since he has multiple, and then this building could be based on who's using it.
So could I just, okay, so I'm listening to everything, and everything sounds great. Businesses want to be able to have that mask. Only, my only concern with all this, okay, is that people that are working within the businesses are just now able to get vaccinated, they're on their first shot and their second shot, they're not fully vaccinated. We drop the face mask, the people are vulnerable, the people that are still working that are younger or whatever. I get that, hopefully their masks cover up. I just don't know if we're going too quick. So my next thought process, Travis, what do you think you'd want to do at the transfer station?
Mask.
Okay, so, so we're contradicting what the governor's saying. We're saying, as a town, we're saying, and I'm not, I'm not taking away, you're going to have everyone in a mask inside a building that has air. You already have people that have to wait, because there's only one thing there, when the governor and the science is saying, we don't need that. So that doesn't make any sense, yet we're saying it's okay to go into Seven-Eleven with twenty people and not have any masks. So we're going the opposite of science, so...
I...
So there's a lot of what ifs. So in my opinion, we can't make every area a different rule. It just doesn't, this is the thing, I've been listening to it, been reading about it, we either have to have, just like the state is doing, okay, no masks, outside, in the building, if you're vaccinated, you don't need to wear masks. We can't be making all these little rules. That's my personal opinion, it just doesn't work.
But every business has that right. Every single business.
I agree, each business does, but, you know, it just doesn't make any sense.
Linda?
Can, could it be that you, if you dropped this and basically were following what the governor's recommending, but it's personal choice? I've been vaccinated, I, if somebody comes into my office with questions, usually they're staying in the doorway for the most part. Linda and I have been working very closely together, and we're not wearing masks. We've both been vaccinated, I think we feel, well, we better feel comfortable by now, but it almost seems like it would be a personal thing, that if you want to wear a mask when you come in. I just don't see how it can be that you have to when, I don't know, that's...
I think there are special situations, whether it's somebody's personal health issues or anything like that, that should come into play, and I think that's important. I know in our ma, we just dropped our mask at the Deer Valley News, but if somebody comes to the door, we put it on, because we don't know who that is. So, but within our working environment, we are not wearing our masks, because we know all of our employees are, you know, vaccinated. So I think that we all have to be wise and make decisions that work for the individual businesses and buildings and people that you have working. And so I don't think that everything one way or the other works. I think right now we have to be fluid and be able to adapt. I would just say, everybody should continue to keep a mask handy, because you never know when you're going to need it. Do you know who's first?
Eric?
Eric?
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so just a couple of points. So the governor did say, this is our guidance, you as a municipality can do whatever you want. So whatever decision you guys make is, you know, we can, we can move forward that way. I will say about five minutes after the governor announced, hey, this afternoon, I'm going to say there's no more masks, I already had calls from two businesses who said, I just had irate people in here because I asked them to wear masks in my business, you know, the governor said this. I do think in abruptly removing the mask resolution, there could be, you know, an uptick in complaints to Randy or the Police Department, or, you know, it's going to be confusing at first. So I think, you know, when we do rip this Band-Aid, or if we decide, you know, to announce a date where the Band-Aid will be removed, there's going to be confusion around whether or not there needs to be a mask. I'm happy to share all of that information with the businesses, obviously, and just let them know, you know, if it is removed, that they still have the right to request those masks. My last point is that Wilmington met on this issue last night. I've spoken to a few of the representatives from down there, who said that they have decided to delay this decision until, then their next meeting, June first, I believe. So, you know, they, they didn't come to a conclusion on it last night.
But remember, their town offices are still closed.
This is true, this is very true.
Sarah?
I think that what we're, all we're really talking about is removing the resolution, which stipulates that they have to.
Right.
By removing it, we in no way say that they can't.
Right.
We're simply saying, you no longer are required to. And then individual businesses, just like some individual businesses require you to wear a shirt or shoes, can say, you have to wear a mask. And yes, there will be some people who will be upset by that, but those people have been upset by that since last spring. And I understand what you're saying about it possibly being confusing within town offices, but I don't think that that, I don't think it's that confusing. I think that it can, I don't think we, I don't think if we rescind it, we rescind it tonight, we can vote to rescind it on a certain date. So we give people time to ask questions, figure out what is...
I'm guessing that there's already businesses in town who have made the switch.
Seven-Eleven does not have a mask requirement anymore.
That's what Randy just said?
Yeah, I was in there this morning.
We have another comment? Mr. Giordio?
Mike and...
He's from...
Put her hand down.
Hey, folks, how's it going? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just had a few comments about it. You know, as an operator at Mount Snow and a part of the community, you know, I think I definitely understand specifically Joe's hesitations in removing it so quickly, but, you know, I, I think people are a lot more adaptable than we give them credit for, and having different stipulations at different places, you know, people are going to know whether Seven-Eleven or Snow Mountain Market or Mount Snow have those pretty quickly. And, you know, I'd also say that, I would ask you to just consider the employees in a lot of these businesses who are left with this burden every day of having to deal with folks who walk into their establishments and have to say, I know the state of Vermont, and I know other towns, and I know other areas are doing this, but we're not, it's part of our, it's part of our town ordinance, you know, where if they choose that burden and choose to enforce masks, then, then, you know, that's something they're going to have to deal with. But if there's other places that, that don't choose that, you know, it's, it's a much more difficult situation for them. So I would just ask that you would consider those frontline employees who do have to explain that to every guest who walks through the door.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes?
Okay, no. I just wanted to say that I, I agree with everybody about, you know, that you still have to be concerned about all the different people. I was just saying that, you know, I have seen a lot of these things on TV where they're getting into lawsuits and everything about how it's a violation. Can something like that happen? Or would you be able to make it okay with, you know, does Vermont have something that protects you from those type of lawsuits? If you decide something that's against what the rest of the state is doing or what people feel they have a right to?
Well, we were, we are going by the, our overarching rules are what the governor has set forward. So we, we are going, and he has said that businesses can make their own decisions, people can make their own decisions. So I don't think that we are doing...
I just wanted to ask you, I just wanted to put that out there, like I asked you guys, you would know. So, but, and then the last thing, I was trying to ask you before, I don't mean to bring it back to the sign thing, but I just wanted to mention that if you guys do go forward with the sign, which I think is a positive thing, because you could see the difference it made on even Rich Warner's gas station, that nobody even knew was there, but now it's doing great business, you know? And that if you go with the sign, and you said that it violates the Dover thing there if you do a certain type of sign, but isn't the saloon in Dover? They have a sign with different pieces on it, you know, like you said...
Yeah, that's not, Jessica, I think you missed the whole thing. So we're, we're using the sign ordinance the way that it is written and is being interpreted correctly. The library just did not ask for a permit, so that brought up this problem. Anybody else? Randy?
So I guess I have a comment, and I have just one question. So I guess the comment is back when you guys did this, it was because of, I understand, one business in particular asked for it, and the business has now taken their sign down. So if you're going to continue with this, what punishment is the town ready to do these businesses that are now going against your resolution?
That is, that is a very good comment, Randy, and that's why I'm like, I guess it just doesn't matter anymore, but when I go in Seven-Eleven, all their employees have the mask.
And I talked to an employee today, and some of them, it's been left up to their preference.
Correct.
Whether they want to wear one or not, that's what the management...
But is their preference having everyone come in without a mask, that they don't know who's coming in with what or where?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Is it their preference that the people are coming in without the mask? Did you ask them that?
No, I didn't, I just...
That's the question.
But anyway, it's just, and again, it's something that's not enforceable, but...
Okay, okay. Sarah?
The management has said that customers don't have to wear a mask. Individual employees cannot then ask them to wear a mask. No, we... No, wait a minute.
You're not, you don't need to explain.
Well, well, well.
But you keep bringing something up that isn't relevant.
All we need to do is decide or not decide.
Scott.
And then decide if each business, you don't have to keep explaining to me. I'm just explaining what I've seen out there, that's all.
Scott, you have a comment?
I, I.
I'm bored.
I, I don't want to be redundant. I get it. It just seems like to that point, even if they don't, if they decide to drop it. So, you know, why do we have it in place? Why, you know, to me, I think we should just let it go, leave it up to the businesses.
So do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we drop the.
Rescind the.
Rescind.
The sign, this mask resolution.
The, the, this whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
COVID nineteen emergency order, wearing face coverings in town owned, town owned buildings and businesses open to the public within the town of Dover.
Dated.
Uh, dated the third day of July, 2020. As of, um, should we? Um, immediately, effective immediately?
Effective lead down.
Okay.
I'll second it and request an amendment.
Okay.
That we, that we change the, um, rescind, this rescind date to June first to give everybody an adaptive period before we.
So then we're going to go back and tell seven eleven they have to put their masks on?
No, oh, you're right. Never mind, I, I withdraw mine then, never mind. You're right.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Is there a way that we will be able to support those businesses who choose to hold their mask mandate in place?
He just said that.
He said he tried to. He said any other thing.
Yep, like you walk into the town office without shoes or a shirt. I'm pretty sure I'm, they're going to call the police on me, but.
Or me.
Um, okay. Jess?
I, I am going to vote to remove it. I, I don't like her directions at all.
So.
My concern, what I said before, was we are operating as a government. Our buildings and our administrations are a government. Do we then have the right to ask people to wear masks as a government? Not as a business, we're not a business.
Well, this was a town owned business, building, so we are rescinding it and our buildings can make decisions with how they say. I, I, I'm thinking that the police, the, the post office still, you have to wear a mask in there.
That's a federal building.
We can, we can make decisions on our own about our building. All right. I'm ready to close discussion and take a vote. All those in favor of removing the COVID nineteen emergency order, wearing face coverings in town owned buildings and businesses open to the public within, within the town of Dover, say aye. Aye. Oppose. Unanimous. Okay. Now we can all take our masks off. Oh man, it's getting hot in here too.
Took mine off.
Um, okay, let's keep, let's keep plugging through this agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Oh my.
Linda.
Uh, yeah, Lynn, uh, wait, we're on Linda?
Yeah.
Linda is asking us to, the assessor's office is asking us to authorize an extension for filing the grand list. Talk to us, Linda. I know you sent us some materials. Thank you.
Send you materials and.
Rather than us just reading all of this, just give us a, a couple of, of reasons, because I, I.
Reader's Digest.
If, if, if she wants you to speak for her.
You can speak for yourself because I'm part of the problem. All right, so I can answer.
Okay, so part of it is the.
She would prefer to be, and she would refer to.
Okay, so in Linda's note, it says, one of the reasons is, um, the commercial evaluations.
Yeah.
And that's what you're working on, Linda Kirsten?
Yeah. So to give you an idea of what it entails, um, is there, there are over a hundred commercial properties and it requires going through every single one, um, checking the files, in some cases checking deeds, checking past records, uh, going into the, um, PROVAL, which is the cost program and checking and verifying that the information in that cost program is complete, correct, and whatever. It was interesting, the kinds of things that I found. One, one, one keeps popping up in my mind as, as the most egregious is that, you know, land was attributed to condominiums and stated that they had a certain sized piece of land where the rule with condominiums is that the land is held in common and the whole value is, ends up being included automatically with the. So it's that kind of thing that I'm finding. Doing revaluations and doing, um, all of this requires also my conversations with Linda. It requires me talking out what I've found, evaluating what I've found, um, determining a, a direction. Um, and this is, and this is an unusual situation for a commercial appraiser in that usually the first, uh, line of appraisal, the first method of appraisal for a commercial appraisal is the income approach. Well, we really can't use the income approach for a couple of reasons. The traditional one is that nobody will give us their income. But the reality is that COVID has sent income, you know, sent income, you know.
Sideways.
Down. I've talked to several owners who are willing to give me some information and they're indicating that they're off sixty, seventy percent.
That's why they're willing to give you information.
So putting evaluation based on sixty, seventy percent off, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. The second approach to doing commercial appraisals is the, um, is the market approach, sales. And, you know, as, remember, I don't have to leave this, of course, too many, it's too hard, um. There were very, very few comps. We are, Vermont is a rural town. There's not many gas stations for sale in Vermont, in the state of Vermont. Um, there's not a lot of, um, big fancy inns available in the state of Vermont. There's not a lot of snow, you know, ski areas. There's not a lot of movie theaters. There's not a lot of name and classification. There's not a lot of, um, and it was, the problem with that was exacerbated by the haystack, um, dilemma. Some sales that we did have in this town, it was like, oh boy, we've got some sales of inns. Nope. They were all tainted by the haystack. They were dumping of the properties at very, very low prices. And, um, it doesn't work. So what I've had to do is create a kind of, um, pardon the expression, but a master method, um, part, um, cost, which is of course the weakest approach of all, and part sales, wherever I could find them, uh, to get us to where we were, uh, we're looking at properties. I've also done another thing, which, that I grouped like, like properties in town. If it's a barn and there were two other barns that I'm looking at or whatever kind of thing, whether they were used for storage or a garage or whatever kind of thing, then I'm going to look at them together as a group themselves as well as, as well as against their neighborhood. Again, all of this requires discussion with the bureau here. And it takes up her time. And her time has been, um, blown away by the volume of sales, the volume of renovations and the volume of changes in the grand list. And, um, you know, if, if I can, she's not going to say it, but I will, but, you know, she needs to be three people instead of just one. She needs to have two full time, um, you know, people working with her. If the volume remains this way, it probably will for the next two or three years. And then it'll go and back at the end of that. So that's the reason for the extension is to make sure that the data is correct, to make sure that we have touched on everything, um, to make sure it fits with, you know, and every day new pieces of information come in from different directions. So we go, oh wait, let's put that one in here and apply it and see what happens. So it, it takes time to do that. It takes time. And while I'm currently about seventy percent through the commercial things, for the first time, I need to go through them all again, um, just to make sure that everything is correct and refreshing. And that's really the reason for the extension. And also I'll add to that, I could probably have everything done by June fourth, but it may not be a very good job. I don't want to rush. I mean, on that list, over four hundred transfers and that's the ones that I counted. Tabby's been instrumental in helping me create a spreadsheet this year, which is going to help tremendously when I begin the sales study, which they're chomping at the bit. They want that done by July and I, you know, so they're, they're backing up too. But, uh, I want to know that everything was done and not rushed because of the volume. I mean, and he said yesterday.
Right.
The amount that they've processed. So then it comes to me and, uh, you know, current use. Anytime a value change is over here, you have to make sure it goes over here and here and here, which, if that doesn't happen, then we're in E and O territory.
Right.
So I just, I want to be able to double check, even triple check because the way the sales to assessments have been this year, there's a, a pretty big gap. So I want to make sure, can I do anything to bring that closer together?
Did the board have any comments from the ass, to the assessor's office?
That was very thorough.
Mm-hmm. It, 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 it seems like, um, there are extenuating circumstances this year and I'm sure we're not the only town that's going to have the same issue. Um, and we are high in the volume of transfers and so, um, any comments? Joe? Anybody else? So then I will entertain a motion for us to ask the state, the Vermont Department of Taxes for a thirty day extension and I need to sign this.
Uh, a move that we, that we request a thirty day extension on filing of the grand list.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I will say hopefully we will not need that thirty, the whole thirty days. But it's either thirty or fifty.
No, I think, I think.
But I think.
Better to have it and not need it.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the good recap. Okay, economic development, Shannon.
Uh, so summer concerts have been booked. Um, all of our contracts are out and we need them to come back signed. Uh, we have thirteen dates. We kick off June twenty seventh and go until the Sunday of Labor Day, September fifth. Um, we're trying something new on one of the nights. There's actually two acts that are splitting on Wednesday night.
Cool.
So all of those are out. Boosers have been ordered. Um, an ad will be in the values for Memorial Day issue. Um, so all of that is moving on in this year. We have some people that haven't been back for a couple of years, so we race to fill all of those dates. Oh, and there's no July fourth, so Sundays and Wednesdays, but no July fourth.
Okay. Joe?
Eric. Still up there?
Yeah, he's there.
He is there.
Any thoughts on my suggestions from yesterday? So we had a discussion, okay, do you want to tell people what your thought was? Just we're not having a two person. We just lifted the face mask. We can have people inside this building that if we have any rain dates, we possibly utilize this building if Perry can come up and see if they can do any of the bands. The last thing I want to do is spend the money for a band, have a cancellation and we not get the band to be able to play. Or outsource to, I, I don't care if it goes, I don't care if they play inside some business that wants them. I'd rather not have them not play and we get them to play. If they, they want to ultimately play and get paid, then just do a rain date. I know that this building may be used a lot of times, but it may not be used some of those dates. So just reaching out to get the best.
Aren't the contracts out already?
I would have to see what's available for the all the dates and we have to send addendums to all of those contracts.
I, I'm just saying, just reach out to, to our, reach out to our individual and see what he has to say. I know we already have contracts that they get to, to block out. If they, if we have another option and they, then next year we just don't book that band if we gave them an inside option. You know, so they can, you know, we can just use it. I don't want to say use it against them, but like, okay, we gave you another option, but you decide not to set up there. That's all I'm saying. I know we have the addendum, but I, that was during COVID when we didn't know if things were going to open up or now we have opportunities to be inside. That's all I have to say. Say my piece.
Linda Kirsten?
Yeah, I would suggest that weather is very, very difficult to predict. It can rain by hell in the morning and clears off in the afternoon or it can, or it can exactly reverse and set a little cloud burst down for twenty minutes, you know, in the afternoon. I don't think the logistical, um, situation of moving groups up here to set up here while people are waiting or whatever makes any sense whatsoever.
Thank you. Eric?
Well, I was just going to say, I think, you know, because we're in a, at a point now where we weren't when we first had these contracts out, you know, moving into next summer or, you know, if anything in the fall, the winter that we decide to do, I think any new contracts we send out, we can absolutely add the stipulation that there could be a rain location. But I think the logistics of correcting all of those contracts at this point is difficult. I, I do think we can make the recommendation to Kevin to say, that he can ask the bands if they would be willing to do that at this point. But in terms of modifying all of those contracts, I don't, I feel like that's not the best course of action.
Scott?
Just a quick point of clarity. They don't receive the full portion if, if it's like canceled though, right?
Full portion.
No.
No, they do receive the full portion?
I don't think you were here the night we did the contract.
Yeah, they, they receive a smaller portion, right?
Fifty percent.
Their concert fee and there's a set time that the concert coordinator has to change, um, or has to cancel in the event of rain. Um, so if that happens, they get fifty percent of their fee mailed out to them. Um, and we were talking about possibly rebooking those people who it might be affected into extending the season or we, starting our fall winter with them. But, um, so if the concert is canceled, the way that the contract is written, um, they'll receive fifty percent of the concert fee.
Okay, because I thought of Richard.
Well, well, Scott had his hand up.
So I was just going to say, do we think it's worth, so say that it, I, is it like five hundred or three hundred? Is that how much they would get? Just in general, just.
They're different.
Okay, so say it was like five hundred. Is it worth like, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars, you know, you save to put them in here?
So, um, I think for next season, I think we can definitely do that. The problem is in the past, we've always had the tent at Dover Forge, which was adjacent. Um, we've lost that option. Um, so the logistics of just getting people to come up here are, are hard. Um, I think it's, it's, I think it's just too late in this year to do it, only because it's a lot of work to go back to. But I think next year, I think we can use this as a solid choice if the bands want to do that. Um, I know some of them are hesitant with joining the fall winter series for the space that's in here. So we'll just have to see what they say, but I think it's a great option moving forward. But I don't think for this season, I think we should go back and change it.
Linda?
Just a comment, since Rich took his tent down with economic development, possibly purchasing other land parcels, that maybe the town would put something like that somewhere that would be utilized by either concerts in the rain or flea market or whatever, other ideas. Farmers market, um, my, my bit.
Um, yes, but that's going to be, that would not be applicable to this summer in any way. Are you waving, Eric?
I was pointing as if that's not, that's not a 2021 summer occurrence. That's, that's further down. It, it is in the plan. It is in the rec plan. It is not a 2021 item.
Anything else from anybody? All right. Thank you. I'm looking forward to a sunny day every day this, this summer.
Every sunny Sunday.
Every sunny Sunday, and, and a couple of Wednesdays.
Couple of Wednesdays.
And we are, we're going to, we're going to rock it this year. I think people will be out and ready to listen to some music. Thank you.
Oh, and just for point of information, the woman from Efficiency Vermont is going to be using the concerts as a way to do outreach to people about the Targeted Communities Program.
We had the census deal last year.
Yep. Excellent. Excellent. All right, moving along to the consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes of May 4, 2021, and May 11, 2021.
Were we all here for both of them?
I have them both here. Let me see. We have, uh, yes, yes.
We were all here for both of them?
Yes.
Okay. So make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 4 and May 11, 2021.
Do I have a second? Dan seconds. Any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve the warrants of May 15, 2021, in the amount of $5,972,621.70.
So moved.
Dan second. Any discussion? Again, most of this is the state education payment. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't forget to sign these. They're right here. Do you need a pen? FYI, the River Valley Union School District Annual Meeting is Saturday, May 22nd, 10:00 AM, in Ward's Borough. You can vote tomorrow at the Dover Town Office if you want to vote and you can't make it. There, there's a special meeting to-
Have they, is it open tomorrow?
It's, tomorrow's Thursday. It's Wednesday. Um, special, Andy mentioned that you could vote today, or you could vote tomorrow. Special meeting, June 4th, 9:00 AM, here to review, for employee evaluation review. All department heads will hopefully have theirs done. Did you notify the department heads?
Oh, yes, schedule. I'm, we've come back already.
Did, Jeanette, did you reach out to Rich Warner as well? He was supposed to be at-
Very good. And then we're going to meet here with the department heads on June 18th at 9:00 AM. And we are going to-
Except for Randy, because he's raising his hand and shaking his head.
Have a schedule. Yeah, she won't be here.
I will not be-
So we'll schedule you separately.
I'm leaving the tent, and may not be back until, um, about the week eight.
Wow, nice.
I mean, if you guys want on that June 4th, you can, if you mind, Bill first, give me a call, and I can come down that day afterwards, or whatever that takes for you guys.
Okay.
The day afterwards of-
We'll, we'll figure it out. We can do it. And then? I, any liaison reports? Yes, Jeanette?
I just wanted, as an FYI, Cass is going to start the alternative analysis starting tomorrow. It's like, is it, and we're going to do some drilling next week at this location, and also at Dover.
Okay, thank you. That's exciting.
Oh, and one other thing, too. This was the best thing, too. It's not definite yet, but I got about small room health insurance rates for 2022.
Yeah.
Lucas Lucio filed, and he proposed 7.8% decrease.
Yes. Although individuals are going up.
Oh, goodie.
We, this is, the town would be under that, so that's great.
Yes.
And now, another update. Everybody heard, I hope that the, the House and the Senate passed unanimously the moratorium on this excess school spending. And it, and the governor came out today and is not in favor of it, but there's a feeling that he may pass, he may let it become law without his signature. But that would help a lot of the local districts. And this is really big news, because the $20,000 we spent with a lobbyist is going to save this town a lot more money than that. So that is, if it, if it becomes law, and we're all hoping it is, but it's rare to have an unanimous vote out of both chambers, so.
Really?
It's, it's very good news. So.
Special move forward.
Yes. There's a two-year moratorium on the excess spending. So, does anybody have anything else they want to say on this lovely hot evening here in the Dover Town Hill? Hall?
Massively in my house this week.
Yes, Tabby?
We're having some very good success with the questionnaire that the Dover Planning Commission has put out. So far, we've got 39 responses as of when I last checked, and there are in place at the North Market. I'm putting some up at the West Dover Post Office, and I believe Becky was putting some up at the East Dover Post Office, but I'll be checking that again.
In the library.
And in the library as well.
That'd be great.
And it's going to remain up on site until such time as the Planning Commission decides to drop it. But we're getting some great response and some really interesting information out of it, so.
Good. Good. What else?
We have an executive session with Travis.
We have an executive session with Travis. Okay, so I'd like to have some-
Motion to go into executive session at-
7:52.
7:52.
Goodbye.